I declare all the notices legally posted according to the Leans Act. And the quorum, all council members are present. Next item on our agenda is our open mic session. Do we have anyone that wanted to address the council?
We do not.
Move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion? Or questions? Or motions?
I'll make the motion that we accept it. The agenda.
The motion's second to adopt the consent agenda. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Departmental reports. We'll start with parks and streets and water and sanitation.
We had ADMS come out and ADMS they uh they redid a lot of their lines and they dug this road over on the Dunn Street. And uh they dug, they tried to find that culvert just over there by the fire station. I know I've seen it personally, but nobody dug three foot down. We didn't like me, I tried to dig and Ken tried to dig and Roy he dug also and no one seen it like. I don't know if someone cut that out or what, but I know for sure that it was a culvert that was right there so. And you will probably, we probably need to put something right there just to get that water flowing.
That along the Dunn Street?
Yeah, it's on the Dunn and uh College.
Yeah.
The Dunn and College Street. Uh cause they hold water right there pretty good. And then uh what else I have, I know like right now, a lot of people starting to smell sewer right now because it's so hot. And I'm getting phone calls all the time about, you know, just smell of sewer in people's house or this this pass somebody someone custom clean out, though it doesn't have a top on it, lid on it. So I'm getting a lot, a lot of phone calls about that right now too. And uh we have some permit patch over there. We'll be patching up the roads sometime this, sometime this week. Uh I know this West Cross Main, East Cross Main is pretty bad, so we'll be patching up those roads with that permit patch also. So. That's all I have.
What about the pickup?
Oh, the pickup truck? We just took that, I just took that to the guy today. Uh they have a rear main all s- already, so we trying to, we have to, he said that he's gonna clean it then that it would kill him and that I know. Everything so.
How about that, the culvert over there by the cemetery that washed down, is that all fixed now? The Cross Main?
Oh, okay, yeah. The, so we, right now, the culvert is, is in right now, so what we have to do is me and Ken, or we have to find somebody that could actually put something around that that culvert, culvert, because if water goes underneath there, we're gonna be in the same situation. I mean, if, I guess if it, if it rotten out the bottom of that culvert, so I mean, I'm not a great, I've never did it before with something that big. But, I mean, we had some, we got some bids uh from a couple guys and it was, I think it was just a little bit too expensive for the city. So I told Ken that we could try, we, we'll give it a try.
What did, what supposed are they gonna put around?
I talked to Chad from the, from the county today, he was like, either some, some kind of heavy duty tin or some kind of uh plywood or some, something that could try to keep that water from going, just lower it down, going in there at the, at the bottom so. And we'll get some cement bags and also step in there, so, I mean, see, I haven't ever did before, but I, we, we willing to give it a try so.
To feed off your point, they put in that culvert. Ken, it's as far off the ground where the water runs, so you tell me where that water gonna go, right underneath the dang culvert? And they said, they said, well, there was some stuff underneath it, that's what he gave me for an excuse.
That's gonna wash away.
I know. Yeah, I, I, I know, but I'm, I'm just telling you.
So the skirt they're asking you to put on is below?
Yeah, you have to do one like below and you have to do one at the top, because if not, when it start filling it in, it just gonna wash it, it's gonna wash away.
What did they recommend?
That's what, that's what Chad, I talked to Chad today and that's what he recommended. I told Dave, I was like, since the county put it in, I would, I would like for the county to do it so that if something do happen, it'll, I mean, won't be on us so.
Yeah, and going back to what Dave said.
I don't think, hopefully nothing won't happen, but I'm just saying like, you know, you just.
Yeah.
The, the water on this end, of course, is coming this way, so we gotta put something on the outside so they can put cement in there. Either flashing or something all the way around it, so when the water hits it, you know, it won't uh so whatever we're gonna put on has gotta go on the outside against the wood. You know, the brace we got all the way around.
Because see like the old way, the, the one that they took out, they put it in first, then they build everything. This way, we use the old wood and everything built.
So are they saying to clear out the old ties? Or do we keep the old ties?
The one old tie that is rotted on the other end, we gotta replace. But we got wood, I think we need a little more of that.
Yeah, we need about three or four more.
Yeah, where to brace up this side of it.
Then you have to build something around it, of like, make it tight, you know, around it so water won't, goes in there whenever they pack it down.
Okay.
So is it like the ones that the new half, uh, have on uh Old Brandon Road when they put those, those what you call it?
The culvert.
Them culverts in, they put cement, they first they build it up, then they put cement?
Oh, just a big old bridge, so I'm not, like, they, they putting like uh, they filling it in with dirt just because, you know, it'll cost the city a lot of money if we filled it in like with uh blum rock. So we just trying to do it the best we can with what we have, so. No cement. The cement we gonna use is bad.
Yeah, the bag, uh, yeah, bags, yeah.
We might put that in, around the bottom, this guy has something behind it to keep it there, right?
Yeah, we gonna put bag, we gonna put, supposedly Chad's saying, we gonna put ten bags on this side, ten bags on that side, and then we build like, we take something that'll form around that big old pipe and gotta be a, a tight fitting, so whenever they fill it in, dirt will not, you know, go out, go out and when water come in, it wasn't, it won't like take the road away.
When you talk to the, the other guys who did bids on this, did they say how they were going to go about doing it?
Yeah.
What did they say?
They were gonna put, well, almost fill it all with blum rock.
He said it took about four eighteen wheelloads of blum rock.
And then uh he was gonna put cement in both ends and, but, but get that fully encased.
Yeah, I just don't know how.
J T excavation was, you know.
Check, yeah.
I just don't know how.
The county, they do it a lot. I, I do trust that they know what they doing, but like you said, when it come to like, you know what I'm saying, like that big of, that big of a culvert, you know, it's bigger than me, so.
Yeah.
Trying to get that tight fitting and.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, I don't know how long.
Once we get a week in it, I mean, we're just wasting all of our money if we don't do this right, and that's, that's something I don't think we wanna do. Um.
Well.
But they didn't give you like any specific like layout, diagram, how they were going to go about doing the construction of it, when they gave you the proposal for their estimates?
He just told us how he was gonna do it. He does a lot of work for the county. J K excavation. Yes. But he wanted to fill it with pretty much all blum rock and, you know.
Right.
Where the water would be able to, you know.
Not the culvert tomorrow. Trying to figure out some ideas. But we need to, we need to get a solid answer, I think. As opposed to doing it, wanting it washed out in the next big hurry.
And then to uh, I'm not sure if y'all familiar whenever, I say something about the, the trail that we was working on back in the winter time. Uh, we call it the Parkway of Excellence, which we have a sign for. So if you going towards Hillsboro, it's a trail that we always, we always walk from, from the hill to, to school, so if you look right there, we laid some uh, some nice gravel rock right there.
Yes, it is.
Think it look pretty good. We're gonna let it rain and get packed down and maybe we'll put some more down, so.
I do agree with you. I like that. I like the sound of that and what it, and what it suggests, the path of excellence. It just speaks to our commu-, our commitment to make our, to do all that we can as best we can to make um our city a source of pride, and so, thank you so much to you, Mr. Washington, and to all members of the um, the Street and Parks Department for, for your unwavering efforts to to make our city better in terms of both form and function, to make it more visibly appealing and, and then also to make it better serve the needs of our constituents. So with that in mind, I was just wondering how the post office parking lot factors into your surface repair plan?
So uh, the post office, we fill it, we fill it in, but I was always told, you know, like the post office, like we, you know, like the city really not responsible for the post office. But, I mean, I'd be more than welcome to fill it in, you know, we fill it in whenever we have like uh extra rocks and stuff like that. Yeah, but like we're just, with the uh, uh rock asphalt, I can't, you know, waste a lot at the post office.
Okay.
And then you have the whole city streets is still bad.
Okay.
We maintain it because they want.
Yeah, I know, okay.
So.
When you can.
We save the good stuff.
Got you.
For our streets.
Appreciate it, Ken, we appreciate your work. It's great work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Fire department?
Fire department.
It's going.
It's going.
It's going.
Okay, talk to us.
We kinda had a slow month last month, dropped down to fourteen, which is, that's a little slower than what we've been doing. We had fourteen calls, uh fire, seven EMS rescue, one hazardous condition, once, two service calls and uh one good intent call and one false alarm. That part is going. Uh, we finally received our petition from the attorney's office.
Okay.
And we've had a few people going around getting signatures. Right now, all we're needing is homeowners and landowners that are registered voters in this, in this precinct of Ellis County is what we're looking for right now to get it put on the ballot. Everybody that signs the petition has to be a property owner.
And you need how many signatures on that?
A hundred.
One hundred. Where, where are we now?
About thirty to forty is what we have right now, and that's just going out a couple of hours and doing it.
Okay.
And meeting people. I do think we can, we have the, the town hall meeting tomorrow, hopefully we can answer a lot of questions and finish up on the signatures, because we're supposed to have it done by, I think, the twenty-third. We have it, we have to have it back to the attorney by the twenty-third, so he can get it to the commissioner's court, or to the county clerk first. I think the county clerk, they have to prove up all the signatures and everything, then it goes to the county county commissioner's office. And somewhere in between there, we don't know exactly when yet, we have a schedule, but I don't, haven't looked at it. Uh, we'll be coming to the city council and there'll be a form that the city council have to approve saying that you give your blessing and consent for us to become a E S D. But that's really all we got going on right now. We do have, we did get another brush truck. We got rid of two that we're having a lot of trouble with, and we got one from the forestry service. That's another one, just like the one, big one we have. We did receive a twenty thousand dollar grant for a new skid unit to put on it. It's gonna cost more than that. Fire department's gonna use what little funds we have left and put towards it to try to get it operational, so we'll have two good brush trucks. Now it does need minor repairs, because it was a military vehicle and those things sit a lot. So there's a lot of rotted stuff on it we need to work on. But other than that, everything's been going great and running smoothly.
Do you have a petition at city hall?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a petition at city hall, like on display?
No, we don't.
We might wanna try and see.
We can put it up here.
People that come in will, they might see it and sign it.
And for the benefit of those present who might want to attend the public forum on tomorrow evening, what time does it start?
Six P M.
Six o'clock.
At Cafeteria.
Cafeteria. That's tomorrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I'll try to make it to the meeting. Uh municipal court?
Um, courts been going good. We're back up on citations this month at a hundred and fifteen. Um, we have a closeout of a hundred and seventy citations. Um, the average speed we're posted limit is eighteen point two four. We have uh, we had trials last month, the way it fell, our court fell before the council meeting this time, so we had uh pre-trials last Tuesday, which went really well. Um, and then we're gonna set bench trial for November. Sound good?
Okay.
Police department?
When I was putting the stat sheet together, I did have to get one page and forgot to give her all the rest of the pages, so you'll see the, the stack that I put there. And uh, one additional sheet that I've added of the very last one in the stack, it's so you can compare, try to remember what that was last month or what that so I just went ahead and put the month uh in there, so you'll see what last months were in each one of the deals. Uh, really not much else on the stat sheet. We did get one officer hired. He is in training. Uh, he should be fixing to go to phase two. He does have some experience. So it won't be a full sixteen weeks of F T O. It will be modified depending upon his ability and how quick he catches on to the way we do it here in, in Milford. But supposedly we also had an officer have an oral board today and go to another agency, so you get one, you lose one. We'll see how he bears in that, you know, you always wish a guy's well, but I'm sure wish he wouldn't leave. But uh, that's uh, that's the way it's going, trying to get caught up on a bunch of paperwork. There's a, the calls coming in, the things are picking up as far as in the daytime. So there's sort of things that I'm not getting to, put them, put cheap things that I need to try to get to, but uh, we're answering calls. The guys that are out working arrests, they don't know how to do search warrants, so I have to type the search warrants and then go track down the judges and get them all signed, so uh, but it's, we're staying busy, running and gunning.
Are vehicles all operational?
I'm sorry?
Are vehicles all operational now, or?
No, sir.
Always got a signal seems like.
We uh, we do have one, of course theoretically it's still under warranty. And they're supposed to come pick it up. It's an electrical bug somewhere. It'll be not running for three days. You jump it off, it'll start. You put it in reverse and it dies, so they just got an electrical grimmer in there somewhere and with all the computers and cameras and Wi-Fi's and everything else, you know, it's, they have to go back to the up there, we can't, we can't work on stuff like that.
Do you know if other police agencies have as much trouble with vehicles as we do? It seems like this been going on for years. It doesn't matter what car it's in yet.
I don't know. There's a reason everybody goes to Tahoe's. They've tried and true, they've got all the bugs worked out of them. It always happens when you take a new vehicle and add it to a fleet that they find things wrong with them, and one of the worst things we ever did was lose the Crown Vic. That, that was the most trusted police platform there ever was, and supposedly the EPA made too many rules and Ford says we can't change the Crown Vic as it is to fit the EPA, so they did away with it. And then everybody started coming up with them and now you've got some that never should have been patrol cars. But the corporation made a patrol package and the prices are enticing. And then you have a problem.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get your perspective on that, standing long for it for a long time. I know Chief Phoenix was police chief, uh, we had some of the same problems occasionally with vehicles. You get one fixed and another to break down.
We, we, we went to the infallas, cause you couldn't get Crown Vics anymore and one or two rounds of going to those and everybody went back to the Tahoe's. They just they tend to last longer.
Well, we just.
But they're expensive.
I'd like to know what uh what our best advice is that you can give us. Well, thank you for the departmental reports, everybody. We'll go on to our other agenda items. Uh, first, just to discuss issues regarding the damage to culverts and drainage caused by ADMS gas company.
Kind of on the last, what Swish was just talking about. Uh, when we met with ADMS last month, ADMS had wanted, ADMS pretty much doesn't want to move any of the valves that are in the middle of the culvert areas, which is what we had had them out, back out to look at. Uh, because addressing the culverts as far as cleaning them, as far as getting them repaired is gonna be a little bit difficult with where their valves are, but for the most part, they assured us that the valves were far enough out of the way for us to be able to work on. But we do have, like on the other side of town, the culvert at that one spot that's just totally crushed in. We need to, as I see it, we need to get this stuff done, those culverts taken care of or any of our other issues city-wise at those locations as soon as possible, so that we don't lose ADMS. We've got ADMS working with us right now, and if we keep them working with us, I think we'll be in better shape as opposed to sometimes they allow months to go by when they don't talk to us. So I would just like to try to get something on our schedule, whether it's Swish and I going out and figuring out we need eight culverts or whatever it is that we need in those areas that are ADMS issue areas. I think we need to try to get that stuff fixed so that we can get ADMS kind of out of our hair and be done with that whole situation right there. What they are talking to us about doing, when, when Ken and I met with them, they, they the culvert, what happens is you've got a culvert that sits right here and directly coming out of it is one of their valves to shut off gas for a city block. And so what they are, what they are proposing to us to do is when we come and we have to clean right in front of those culverts and silt comes out of them and we have to do the buildup of them, clean out the buildup of them. What they are proposing though, they would do is to come in with concrete at the, at, at the slope off, I guess, or at the entrance or whatever you wanna call it, of the, of the culverts to allow us to be able to not have to worry about cleaning out those areas on a routine basis. We would be able to hose them off, we would be able to shovel them off, they wouldn't collect debris nearly as much. Which is a very, I, as I see it, probably the best answer for everybody concerned of how we deal with it. But they are waiting on us to get our stuff in line, situated, culverts in place, that type of stuff. To be able to see where we're going to raise and lower the elevations of those areas so that they can come back in and finish up their work according to what we've built. So I just, my, I just see it as something that we probably ought to put kind of on the forefront or on the front burner of what we need to do. Just 'cause I don't want ADMS to go that way. It seem to be kinda hard to deal with the times. So, that's my whole long skin, you know.
Someone needed.
I don't know that we need to necessarily, I don't necessarily know that there's any action to be taken right now, minus probably us just going through and determining if we're good, you know, there's, I guess there's, there's a culvert that's at the fire house that we're talking about.
Yeah, we got the fire house, and you have two over there that's on uh West Avenue. One on Dixon and one on Second.
Right. So that's three?
That's three. And I'm not su-, what about the one that's on Hills Street? Cause you know, they have that one thing, they have that one gas line, that valve right there.
That sits on, that sits on it?
That sits on the culvert.
They said that they were going to leave, like their whole idea, I guess moving a, a valve to them is extremely pricey, I guess, from what I can tell from the meeting. Um, that was the main one where they said that they were going to build a concrete outfall, like we talked about that one specifically. You're talking about the one where it sits off, pretty much on the culvert?
You have this, this culvert right here by Mr. Jeffrey's house, just, just right, pretty good too.
Right. So that's four. What about the one over on Martyr Street right there then, by the manhole that they buried over also? Are we gonna try and take that across the street?
On Martyr Street?
Right there, it, kinda behind the, uh, I don't know, it's like the alleyway. Where they were working on the gas line forever, yeah, and there's no, like, we've gotta get it over in there as well.
The culvert over up by Jordan's house, remember those, want to put that stuff somewhere? This been, that's go pretty good, so it's like six.
It's, that's, those are like the six. I'm not saying that we need to do every one in the city, but I feel like those six are you know.
Need to be done.
Yeah, need, need to be done so that ADMS can be done as well with us and that it doesn't, we do this a year from now, they may be saying, you know.
Okay, it, oh, did the water back up on main because of the COVID or it just didn't have anywhere to drain it? Well, we had that big downpour.
That big rain?
Yes, when the streets were flooded.
That may have just been flooded.
I think it was a big old flood and a lot of the culverts, like that culvert uh, just right here by, on this corner lot. There's a lot of debris off in there. So when the wa-, when it do flood, that, you have to think about them culverts probably been, haven't never been cleaned out and it probably got like this much dirt off in there, so even if you do like spread water holes or something in there, you can't, you never gonna get it all out, but I think that had to do with a lot of, just a lot of, we got a lot of rain that day.
Yeah.
Okay.
The storm drain were good.
At the school?
Border, yeah, there's three that goes under seventy-seven, but it's just too much water for it to go through there. About backing up. But, yeah, we finally got tech stock to clean those out. Took me, I think, what was it, eight or ten years to get them to come out here and do it? They did it like in one day. But anyway, it's progress. Okay, we ready for number six?
Yeah.
Uh, discuss the proposed subdivision on Old Brandon Road, Frank's Road.
Okay, Ms. Bernice is here and she will do the talking.
Okay, Ms. Hutton, you have the floor? Tell us what she wants to know.
Thank you, thank you all. I like to look at people when I'm talking to them. Yeah, but I'm a bit scared about it, I don't want that to anyone.
Right.
Um. We, the last time we spoke, we talked about a community with a community park, or a city park. So what we put together is a proposed plan, not the final plan. My background is I T, and, and I may have written that before. But when we would uh propose a plan to a company, the right code that run the company. And we talked about what does it need to involve the people that's part? So it reminds me of So it reminds me of building a park for your city. What do you want, what do you want to see in a park? Of course, when you write codes, they say, don't go away and write something and then dump it off on someone. So we don't wanna propose a park and dump it off on you, and say, look here, here's what we got for you. And you may say, it's not my idea at all. That's not what I'm thinking about in terms of a park. So to get you involved and you're part of it, then we would, we together would come up with a park. And it becomes our park and not my park. You may say, it's not what we're thinking of. But getting you involved in the, on the ground floor, then yes, everybody could be proud of the park. With that in mind, this is what you may see in front of you. We got two different proposals. One, we got, the way it's shaped, the way this parcel is shaped, two lots from then on Old Brandon Road. But Old Brandon Road has, um, I think it could be like ten lots. Some of them, uh, designed for mobile homes. There may be some mobile homes, I think there's at least two there. But we don't want the mobile homes to be a part of our park, I mean, of our community. So how we would fix that is, instead of having a road come in off of, if you look at your plans, proposed plan, site plan, you see, uh, second plan shows a road coming in off of Old Brandon. Then the other plan, the road comes in off of Frank's Road. There are two entrances, uh, two roads coming off Frank's Road. So what we, what we're asking you is, if we could take out that little section that would be point to about two lots on Old Brandon and sell those two lots, but then let the rest of that piece of that parcel be just the part that we're going to, um, develop. It'll be a part of the plan. Do you see what I'm talking about? There are two of them. Yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
So which option are y'all preferring?
I prefer to be option one. That's the one I would, I would ask you to take a look at.
We talked about the mobile homes.
Mobile homes in this area.
Yeah. I'm the last one on, oh, right here. I'm right next to the two lots.
These are two lots, lot nine and ten.
Yeah.
So we would have about fifty something lots. Everyone see what I'm speaking of? So that's, that's one of the questions that we're asking about. The next thing that we're talking about is where the two roads will be coming in. Will it be two entrances off of Frank's Road? That's also a part of Plan One, the Option One. And what that does, it moves the park, it moves the park closer, uh, within that same community. Now, the park is gonna be open to everybody, it's not just that, just for that particular community. So anyone who wants to use the park, they will have access to the park. And on Option Two, it shows a community center. That's down Frank's Road. There's the detention pond and a community center. There's no options in terms of what we're gonna have a detention pond. We know we gotta have that. Again, whether we're gonna fit in a community center. We, we thought about the community center in that, uh, every community gonna have two of it, you know? And the cost of raising kids nowadays, you pay more for, uh, daycare than you do for college. You know? I mean, you know, we know we gotta take care of our little ones. So how can we help with that? That would be with a community center. So, um, we hadn't decided just yet what size the community center would be. So we thought about like a five thousand square foot community center. And we can put whatever you would want to use or do with that community center. But one function would be possibly a childcare facility. Then it could be other community, uh, uh, functions could be taken in that same, that same space. Then we, we talked about cost. In terms of the park, let's go back to the park. We moved the park from off of Old Brandon to within that, there's about seven acres in that spot. There is an easement, there are quite a few easements. But those easements come together almost like in one area where, uh, Old Brandon turns a corner and becomes off Frank's Road. There's quite a bit of easements in that corner. So we thought, one, one thing would be useful is, we can't build anything there, as we all know. But we could use part of that as a park. I'm from the country, I like gardens. I think a garden would keep the community together. We, there are programs that we can, uh, apply to that would help, uh, keep the garden going. They'll get the garden started and we can, we can create a garden, a community garden or a city garden and have the government of someone else to pay for it for us.
Excuse me, are you talking about a flower garden or a, like a community vegetable garden? Oh, like a co-op type? Okay.
Yeah, we can all go out, get the tomatoes if we want to, we can get greens if we want to. I like greens. I, again, I am from the country, I grew up on a garden. Back in the day, that's what we did, we had gardens. So I think if we got space, put it to use, in this case, we have all of that, uh, easements. Then you can't build anything there, but we can do a garden. So we can get the school involved, the schools can be involved. One of my sisters is a, one of my other sisters, Dorothy runs around digging, digging in the dirt when she's a professional. She is a, she's a nurse with a master's degree, but she chooses to dig in the dirt. But Dorothy digs in the dirt, teaching folks how to grow their own vegetables. She grows across country, teaching folk how to do gardening. But anyway, I think that, uh, Dorothy can teach everybody how to do a garden. I might not be able to teach you, Dorothy can.
Does that area have good drainage?
I'm not certain about that.
Or is that something that would have to be excavated?
Possibly. It's some things that we have to look into, this is the overall, uh, broad picture of it. But of course, the grading and all of the topographical surveys and stuff, we need to do that still. So we'll know what we need to do there. I've spoken to USDA about the gardening and also about the, uh, those things, the culvert garden.
Greenhouse?
Greenhouse. They would provide to us a greenhouse. And I talked to another group and they would provide a pump that pumps the water so we can, uh, keep everything irrigated. Dorothy told me about that. So anyway, uh, that's with the gardening. With the park, I spoke to some people at USDA and they would assist us with, uh, they would assist us with, uh, the park. There is funding that's available for, uh, parks and community centers and stuff like that. The park, uh, someone had said to me, you don't, you don't wanna garden. He said, I wanna garden. Anyway, they say, we don't wanna garden. Yeah, and I talked to some folk about it, they frowned up. But the question comes with you guys, would you wanna garden? Would you want a city park? I think the last time we talked, we talked about the city park. Would you want a, a center for daycare, that could be used as daycare? These are questions that you guys could answer. And then what kind of park would you wanna see in your park? There had these options, they was all crossed around. I talked to the park commissioner that is in the city of Dallas over at the, um, conservancy group over by West Dallas. So he has volunteered to help us with the park. I can't build a park, but he's built the park there in the conservancy center there in West Dallas. So, uh, then it becomes financing. How do we get this financed? There are fundings, there's funding available. We could do, someone suggested go funding. So that's another way that we could, uh, raise monies. And then USDA would do some part, they would do some funding. But they don't do the whole thing as they put it. You can get grants, but there's a portion that you would have to pay for, for your grants. So then the ground. We, we've decided that we can provide the dirt, we can provide the ground. But then the other thing is, we can do this, then, you know what watering is? I do this and you do that. And then together, we got it all going on. So, uh, in terms of watering, we, it's just Jim and I, my husband and I. We're not working with a group. We don't have funding coming in from anyone. But we are willing to work with you, the city, the people. So if we were to look at some sort of, some sort of watering, what is that you can divide in lieu of us dividing you about? It's probably, it's seven acres, right, it's seven acres in that spot. Six point nine three acres. So, um, over half of that will be going toward the park. And we're gonna toss in the part for the garden. So we thought, what could the city do? So the question is going to you guys. What is it, how can we work together on this? Can you provide the roads? Can you provide part of the roads? Can you provide, I think this is in the document that I left with Kim. Can you provide the, um, I know you have engineers, but I think engineers check behind what we do. Is that right? Is the way I'm hearing? But how can we work together to make this happen is the question.
I, are we, are you looking for volunteers like to till the soil once you get it prepared? Is that what you're asking?
No, not right now.
Okay. Okay. I'm getting ahead of you.
Okay.
A question for you about, um, the document that you said that you provided, Ms. Sarada. Does it include a, um, is there like, has there been like a feasibility study done and based upon a needs analysis and included in that document? Is there, is there some way that we could, uh, survey the community to, to, um, to get their input on, cause you were asking us what we would like to see. More importantly is, what do the resident, what might the residents, uh, desire to see? So I was just wondering if all of those pieces, including staffing for, uh, staffing needs for child, for the child, for the community center to maintain, uh, the, the garden? If all of those components are a part of the document that Ms. Sarada has?
No.
No?
Okay. This is just the very beginning.
Yeah.
We're at the initial part of being put together a feasibility study. Yes, we would need to canvass or survey your community, but that would be you guys. You guys would determine what your needs are. And then we can work together in terms of, uh, how can we provide those things? So at one point, a question was asked, could we bring in a park? The other question is, it was asked at your board meeting. And we decided, yes, we can, we can do that. So what you have before you is just a temporary, uh, proposed plan of what it could look like. But in terms of, of doing a study or feasibility study and what you want to see in the park? That's the question. What do you want to see in the park? We can put a park together. I have a, a, an individual who is a park commissioner at the conservancy site near Dallas. Park, Dallas Park Conservancy Group. And his expertise is building parks. Um, I spoke to, who did I talk to about a park? You have someone here on the board, isn't you?
We spoke about the project in the past. But you had wanted the city to pay for the park.
Yes. Question?
No, you had talked to me about the park.
Yeah. So of course, we, we, Jim and I, we would not maintain the park. You, the city, would maintain the park. So, um, you got someone here who has expertise in parks. Yes?
Linking?
No.
No, no.
I talked to somebody, uh, with, with, uh, within your city. Their background, educational background is in parks.
I have an education background in parks, doesn't mean I necessarily know anything.
Well, you got one leg up. So anyway, uh, we can develop a park. Then there is some questions in terms of how much it's gonna cost, what you're gonna see in it. Before we can get a cost, we need to know what you're gonna see, what you wanna see in it. I will meet with the park commissioner that I know and see what some of the options are. But you can tell me, you can tell me what is it that you want to see in a park. I, I would want to build a park and tell you, hey, here's your park. You know, I, it would be peaceful for you to do that.
Well, let us study this and we'll get back with you.
Kim, could you provide us with, uh, the information that you received from the citizens? Could you provide that with us?
Oh, yes, of course.
To us, thank you so much. Appreciate that. No, I, I was just asking, uh, Ms. Sarada, if she could provide, um, uh, the, the council with the information that you gave her so that we will have a more, uh, because we just, we just have the, um, the site development, the two site development plans.
Yeah.
No verbiage or anything, or whatever, whatever Ms. Sarada has, we don't, we may not have that. And so, and if that factors into what you were proposing, then I think we should maybe take a look at that.
It, it just said what, what she just said. The barter system, the, the city would pay for the roads if they donated the land for the park. That, that was all, that's what she just said, was all that's in there, there's no other. That, that was all, is what she just said, was all that's in there, there's no other information.
Would there be a perimeter fence around the outside of the park? So that children playing in the park would not go into the, you know, the yard of the, like, these, these homes that are already there? Cause right now, it's just, it looks like it's just.
Um, we would have a wall.
Oh.
The wall would kind of secluded.